Welcome to the 2016 Sioux Falls School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Sarah Jennings, the moderator for this evening's candidate forum and a representative for the League of Women Voters of Sioux Falls. Our forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sioux Falls, the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, Sioux Falls School District, and the Sioux Falls Education Association. We appreciate their partnership and the participation of our school board candidates this evening. Now, tonight's forum is being held at the Instructional Planning Center and is being broadcast live on Midco Cable Channel 20 and 595 on March 31st, 2016. This forum will also be rebroadcast several times until the election, including Friday, April 1st, Saturday, April 2nd, and Sunday, April 3rd at 2:00 PM and 8:00 PM, Tuesday, April 5th, and Thursday, April 7th at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and finally, Monday, April 11th at 2:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Now, Election Day will be held on Tuesday, April 12th and conducted at 57 precincts throughout the city of Sioux Falls. These polling centers will be open from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM. For specific precincts' locations, you may visit the city of Sioux Falls website at In order to vote in this school board election, you must live within the Sioux Falls Public School District. Absentee ballots will be available daily at the County Auditor's Office in the Minnehaha County Administration Building from 8:00 to 5:00 PM through April 11th. Sample ballots are available at the back of this room. This year's election features five candidates vying for two positions. Carly Ryder and Kent Alberti are current school board members running for reelection for a three-year term. Peter Von Pischke, Randy Dopperpool, and Diana Stelling are also candidates for these two open seats. Now, we are requesting questions from the audience and our viewers, so please write the questions on the note cards provided, and a volunteer will collect them. The League of Women Voters will sort these questions and determine that they address various issues pertinent to the role of a Sioux Falls school board member. Now, if you're watching at this time, you can call in with questions by dialing 367-7900. Again, if you're watching and you would like to call in a question, you can dial 367-7900, and you may also email a question to us at southdakota-lwv@yahoo.com. Again, the email is southdakota-lwv@yahoo.com. Today's forum is also being web-streamed and is available for viewing within the upcoming days on the district's website, which is www.sf.k12.sd.us. Now, at this time, we ask that you turn your cellphones to silent, and if you need to hold a conversation, please do so outside of the room. The format for tonight's forum is as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for introductions, and as we present questions, they will each have one minute to respond. At the end of our session, there will be one minute for closing comments, and there is no rebuttal time. The introductory comments will follow the order in which the candidates appear on the ballot. Therefore, we will begin this evening with Peter Von Pischke. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Thanks so much for having me. I'm grateful that I was invited tonight by the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce. Sorry if I come off slightly irritable tonight. I have a disease called chronic pancreatitis, and if you have a chronic pain disease, one of the weirdest things you'll notice with that is that as the weather changes, so does your pain. So, if I just seem a little up, I apologize for that, you know? But I have it better than many in our school district right now. Unfortunately, because of the economy or whatever reason you can think of, we have a situation in the school district where half of our students are coming from free or reduced lunch homes, and that's the way that kids are qualified regarding where they are on the level of poverty scale. What that means is we have lots of kids with lots of issues, issues in low-income families, issues with single-parent homes, and some have physical disabilities or mental disabilities, there are discipline issues or mental health issues. The Sioux Falls School District is facing a very big challenge right now, and that is why I'm here. I want to better enable our teachers to help all our students.
Thank you, Mr. Dopperpool.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your interest in this year's election. I want to thank the Chamber and League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. My name is Randy Dopperpool, and I am running for Sioux Falls School Board. My family and I have lived in Sioux Falls since 2007. My wife, Kirsten, is currently in the school district and has been with the school district since 2007. We currently have two boys, Colter and Ryder, who are currently attending Harvey Dunn in the elementary stages. I have 16 years' experience as being a professional advocate and have had the opportunity to work with many diverse populations. Throughout my career, I have been able to understand how important it is to listen to people in order for them to be heard and believe in collaborating with others to come up with a workable solution. I want to bring a fresh perspective to the school board and join Dr. Maher in providing positive leadership for teachers, community, and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder?
My name is Carly Ryder, and I am seeking reelection to the Sioux Falls School Board. During my term, I've served our community in further education for students in Sioux Falls. I've enjoyed the experience that I've gained working with the Sioux Falls Education Foundation in raising money to provide over $100,000 in grants for innovative projects in our K-12 classrooms. I've worked closely with my fellow board members to interview and hire our new superintendent, Dr. Maher, and have enjoyed and appreciated his leadership thus far. He has many ideas and initiatives that will take education in Sioux Falls to the next level for our students and our staff. We also implemented the One-to-One Technology Initiative, which has developed our students' skills for their future careers and professions. Our district is changing in demographics each year. We are more diverse culturally and in race. We are increasing in poverty. We have more and more languages spoken by students and families. We have a large population of special education students. We have a commitment to provide a quality education to each student regardless of what the challenge might be. The strategic planning process that started nine months ago will be our guide to addressing these issues and more, and I want to be a part of the exciting times that lie ahead for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alberti?
Yes, my name is Kent Alberti, and I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring the event this evening. I'm running for reelection to the school board for really a very simple reason. I want to continue to be a strong advocate for the 24,000-plus students that are being educated in the Sioux Falls public schools and for the more than 3,000 employees that the school district employs. I have spent most of my adult life as a strong advocate, starting out with my oldest son, who was a student in the special ed programs here in the school district, and the more than 3,500 students that we serve in our special ed programs are, to me, the students that have most risk of not being as successful as they can be, and I want to be an advocate for them on a continuing basis, plus the more than half the students that do qualify for free and reduced lunch. They're the ones that need a strong voice, and I want to continue to be that for them and every other student in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Ms. Stelling. At some point, I'd like to get permission to call you all by your first names. So, I love you, sir. Thank you.
That's fine. I am new to the board. This is my first time in an election, but I do have, I'm from a very structured, from the church family, and we believe to do what you can for your neighbors. And my kids in the district, and when I was teaching at Hawthorne, there was so much fun for me there in my years at Hawthorne. I loved, all I love it. But now, raising Tristan and Andrea, I worry, I don't see the fun. My Andrea had one of her hockey teammates commit suicide. There is no more fun in the schools. And if I could do anything as a new board member, it would be to bring the fun back for the teachers, with the board members, and for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now ready to begin with our audience questions, so, and again, to our audience members, we do have quite a stack up here, but please continue to submit your questions throughout the event. Again, you'll each have one minute to respond to each question, and I'm going to rotate who gets to go first on each question. So, since Peter, you started, I'm going to have Randy, you answer the first question. We'll go down this way, and then, so Peter will be last on this, and then Carly will do the next one. So, that's how we're going to proceed, and we'll see if I can keep track of all of that. All right, to start out, the question is, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of a school system? Randy?
Excellent question. I'm glad you brought it up. I think I can relate to both sides. I believe without a good, without a good school system, you don't have a community. Without a good community, you don't have a good school system. In my experiences, I've been involved with both professionally and as a volunteer. So, hopefully, if elected, I would be able to help bond those ties to make the community and the school districts have stronger ties, stronger bonds, to increase collaboration and to increase communication to help, to help bring education to the children as strongly as possible. Thank you.
Carly?
Thanks. I would agree that there, as I'm a representative of both. As a school board member, when you are out and you're attending functions and you're participating in things, you're definitely a representative of the district, and so it's important that you're professional, that you're open-minded, and you're respectful of people. You're listening to them and taking back ideas that you may hear from other people. But I'm also a member of the community. I'm a parent. I have two children, and so I do think about the needs that I have and the needs that my children's classmates have and the people that I see at school, teachers who stop me or contact me. I take into consideration their needs, too. So, part of being a board member is being able to balance when you're the community member and when you're the board member and acting appropriately at the appropriate time based on who it is that you're representing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
Well, I see myself also as a representative of both the school system and the business community. I've been endorsed by SFEA this year for reelection. It's the fourth time that I've been endorsed by them, and I think that's an endorsement that, to me, is probably the most important one that I get from employees of the school district. That, I hope, shows that I've been a strong advocate for teachers, for fairness, for teacher pay, and all of those things. I've also had the opportunity, having served five years as president of the school board, with that comes an ex officio seat on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and I've taken that commitment very seriously and have been an active member of the chamber and other areas of the community. I continue to volunteer in the schools and work in the community tirelessly to make sure that we have the very best education system possible. Thanks.
Thanks, Diana.
Okay. I think I'm both, hopefully. I work in sales, and so I put a lot of money into businesses, but I've also worked before my own kids with teaching at Hawthorne, so that is where the pain comes. I want to do what's right for the teachers, and if that's another person on the board speaking up for them and doing what they need, then that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
To be respectful, whoever asked the question, I personally do not believe there is a division. This isn't like Washington DC where the guy can hang out with us, get our support, and once we vote for him, he runs away to hang out with his friends, as you see, and we never see him again. We are stuck in the community with you. This is our school district as much as it is yours. Our families are in the school district, as is are yours. The division, well, officially, there is a division. Our community is so interconnected, you could hardly split the difference. You couldn't, you know, this is like, you know, cut the baby and have, you just can't do it. So, and, you know, as a school district, it's always best when you work to make sure that both can communicate together effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Carly, you'll be answering this first, the question first. There were several questions that came in talking about salaries for our support staff and acknowledging that the teachers are going to receive a raise but concerned about the support staff who aren't going to see the same sort of raise, and asking each of you what you would do to support higher salaries for our support staff. Carly?
Sure. It's a great question, and it's a great thing to be thinking about and concerned about. Our teachers are working tirelessly in our classes, but they do not work alone. They work very much with their EAs, with office staff, with custodians, with many, many different resources within their schools, and each of them deserves to be paid fairly. We did get money from the district or from the state with the new legislation. However, that is slated to go specifically towards teachers. And so, what we are doing currently as a board is we're looking at our budget, and we're asking ourselves, what can we do that's right? What makes the most sense? And what can we be, how generous can we be? Because we do recognize that these support staff are important pieces to our school and our students, and so as a board member currently, we are looking at that, and we will do the best that we can to make sure that those people are fairly compensated for the great work that they do and the important jobs that they have in our schools.
Thank you. Kent?
Well, I believe that the state has done every school district and every employee of every school district in the state a huge favor with the halfpenny sales tax, and I know that we could have a conversation about whether that's the most appropriate way to raise money, but the question is, do I believe that our support staff ought to also get a fair increase in pay? And my answer to that is yes. I've been lucky enough the last two years to sit on the Budget Committee. That's something that I avoided for a long time because I didn't think that I would enjoy it, but I've learned the financial workings of our school district. I've studied how we can most fairly treat every employee in the district. Every one of our employees touches a child educationally somehow throughout the day, and I think that our obligation as members of the school board is to figure out how we can give everybody a fair increase so that we're treating them as the important employees that they are.
Diana?
Very important. I think we need to figure out a way to raise taxes, and I am for that, maybe more of it so they can have it in their budget. Again, I think it should go right to their budget, right to their bank account. I don't think it should be left up to anyone else's bank account. I think that's some of the issues with this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
I myself am a part-time substitute teacher, and I do like money, like most people. So, I wouldn't mind seeing a raise, but in all honesty, we are many staff in the schools that care just about as much as the teachers and their investment in the children, especially our education assistants. I've worked with some, and their job is incredibly hard. I do not know how they do it. They're amazing men and women that work with very difficult students, and they help them to grow and prosper and just become the best people that they can be. And so, yeah, we, I agree with all of them. I think Kent said it best. You know, we just need to reward all the staff here in the school district.
Thank you, Randy.
I've had the opportunity to sit down and talk with many different groups, teachers at different levels, administrators. I have the opportunity of living with, living with someone who is currently working for the school district, so she gets to hear a lot of things and a lot of concerns. And I have the opportunity to have a mother-in-law who is with the school district who, who got to hear and see a lot of concerns come forward as far as how that pay is going to get distributed. And the school system works together at all pieces, whether it's the custodial staff, the lunch crew, the teachers, the EAs, the nurses, instructional coaches. It's, it's only a well-oiled machine if all those pieces are working together and, and supporting one another. So, definitely, I would look for a way to help increase the salaries for everyone involved with our children's education.
Thank you. All right, next question, and Kent, you'll be answering first. Again, we had several questions come in on the school calendar and some statements sharing, you know, sharing the fact that for some middle and high school in particular, the new school calendar presents some challenges, maybe more so than for some elementary families, and wondering, do you see or would you support any more changes in the future? And a specific question around snow days, is there a way to build those into the calendar so they don't have to be tacked on at the end? So, a little bit of a two-part question, but, thank you.
Well, I would say that we, we do have an opportunity to look at the school calendar. I've, I've been asked in other interviews if there was a decision that I helped to make that I perhaps didn't feel was something that I was the most proud of. It probably was the way the board handled the school calendar issue. And what we have done to try and rectify what I think was perhaps a misjudgment on our part, we have appointed two school board members to sit on a calendar committee. We have appointed parents from elementary, middle, and high school age to sit on the calendar committee, along with staff, administrators, teachers, to look at how we can best develop a calendar that will meet the needs of every student and every family in the school district. And I, for the next two years, we will be living with the calendar as it is, but during that time, we will have a dialogue to come up with a workable calendar for everyone.
Thank you. Diana?
I think it's an important issue. I think you just need to listen. I think it can change yearly. When I was teaching also, that is something that changed a lot. And you just have to go back at the beginning of the year, listen to everyone, find out what's struggling and what's working, and at the end of it all, come up with a decision. Obviously, we're going to have to live with it for a few years, so by then, we should know.
Thank you. Peter?
Okay. I'm going to be totally honest. Being on a board of members and trying to decide how to do logistics like a calendar is not something I'm experienced with. It is totally new. Probably could do it within a year's time. It's difficult to meet the flexibility issues because you have to balance the teachers' planning, coaches' planning, and then also the needs of parents, because parents, you know, often with work, you have sometimes six months a year in advance to set up things. So, I can see that being very difficult. I, I don't blame anyone in particular for the issues there. That's, that's just a tough road to hoe.
Thank you, Randy.
With my experience as being an advocate comes listening and collaborating, and that's, that's how workable solutions get solved. So, moving forward, if elected as a board member, starting to have those conversations earlier and often to make sure the key pieces are being met for all, all levels of, of school. So, elementary, middle school, high school, sped ed pieces, you got staff, staff to think about, the custodial crew, all those pieces tie into place here. And being able to meet up, I'm glad the calendar committee has involved a lot of, a lot of different community pieces into that because that will be key moving forward two years from now, which the current people who are elected in this election will be a part of. So, just being able to listen and collaborate will be key moving forward.
Thank you, Carly.
Yeah. So, I've had the privilege of serving on the calendar committee since school board members were appointed to that, and it's been a very interesting process. I think one of the things that we have done really well is we've tried to provide some education. Many of the parents who had concerns about why do we start on this day and why do we have this day off, there really is a lot of structure that goes into that that parents don't understand, and rightfully so. There's a lot of details to understand. There's things with the teacher contract that says they have to have certain days off. That's what we've agreed to for the contract period. There are other holidays that are observed. There are in-service days, and then you have to look at things like when can you have conferences based on when gym is available due to either athletic events or things like that? And so, as a parent, we don't necessarily understand all those things, and I think what we need to remember as board members is regardless of the position that we personally have, the calendar is an emotional issue for people, and we're always going to have people who are happy, and we're always going to have people who aren't. And so, it's trying to maximize the number of people who are happy and gain consensus with those folks. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Diana, you'll be first up for this next question.
Okay.
What can be done to increase diversity, training, and sensitivity for teachers and staff in our schools?
We need to open our eyes to the differences all over. And again, when I was at Hawthorne, that was an excellent learning experience for me. I had people to work with and parents to work with that weren't all that happy with me, and I had to meet with them and figure out what was wrong and what we could do better, and that was always a learning experience for me.
Thank you. Peter?
My answer is yes or no. This is, the issue in Sioux Falls School District isn't the traditional issue about sensitivity training, where it's worried about in the workplace when you have to work with minorities and women and whatever the situation is, religious minorities. The situation we have is sometimes is it difficult to be able to connect with some of those students that come from foreign cultures that we don't totally understand, particularly those with immigration, staffs, recent immigrants, and so on and so forth. We can, people can always grow when they're training. I think we need to encourage our staff to, to be kind, to be able to hold their breath, to be able to listen, just, you know, all basic, good, golden rule kind of stuff that you ask people to practice in any job or workplace.
Thank you. Randy?
In our line of, in my line of work, we get the opportunity to work with many diverse populations, and there's trainings that you can attend, and they are strongly encouraged for us to attend because our diverse population is growing. I, the exact statistic, I'm not exactly 100% positive. It's around in the 30, 35% consider themselves diverse in the Sioux Falls School District. So, it is, it is an increasing need and an increasing, it's, an increasing movement forward that we need to get the training out to the teachers at all levels, from custodial staff all the way up to the administrators, and, and developing that, whether it's through the contracts we negotiate with the different, with the different groups, but making sure that's implemented into that somewhere so that we can move forward and help our diverse, our diverse cultures, our diverse communities moving forward.
Thank you. Carly?
I think there's many opportunities for us as a school board and as a school district to form great partnerships with other organizations within the community. We're so fortunate to have places like the Multicultural Center who do amazing things for diverse students in our community. They have after-school programs. They have all sorts of different resources available, and I think we need to work more with those types of organizations within our community who are really the experts. They can provide the training and the knowledge to our staff members and help them to understand maybe what some of their peers and their coworkers are facing, also what some of the things that their students are facing, either in their home life or where they've come from before they came to the United States. I also think that as a school district, we need to really work hard at making sure that our workforce is reflective of the population of people that are living in Sioux Falls. And in doing so, we can help our students to feel comfortable in the schools. We can help our teachers to feel comfortable working with other people because it's really a reflection of the community that we live in. And so, by hiring a more diverse workforce, that will also bring that sensitivity to the workplace naturally.
Thank you. Kent?
Well, I think that one of the things that we all recognize is that the, the changing diversity in our community didn't just happen overnight. This has happened over a period of years, and I think that this perhaps is one area where we can turn to some of our veteran teachers that have seen the population change, that have gone to the training, that have learned to speak some of the languages as we, as we become a more diverse community. When I started on the board nine years ago, we had about 50 languages spoken. Today, it's 70-plus. And I think as, as that diversity increases, we do need to take advantage of the veteran teachers. I think, too, the LSS mentoring program where we get people from the community, in the schools, talking to kids, having lunch with the kids, learning the different cultures, I think that's a huge way for us to begin to build that relationship. This is a community issue, not just a school district issue.
Thank you. All right, next question, and Peter, you will be up first. Are there specific programs you would like to see implemented in Title I schools to raise student achievement?
Oh, boy. Tough. That is a tough question. Okay, so how do we raise student achievement? Okay, so number one, the number one people that students work with day to day is their teachers, and usually, the number one person in their life, other than their parents, that wants to see them succeed is their teachers. You know, and this is all to go back to my worry about flexibility with the school district. I want it so that teachers with their best interest in mind are able to then exercise that best interest and help their students. We need to make sure that our technology allows those teachers to be able to connect with those kids. We need to make sure that for whatever weird regulation that gets in the way, maybe it's school hours, maybe it's the way our online system works, whatever it is, we need to allow those teachers be able to connect directly with those students because that's where interpersonal learning, the real important learning that we have in life and that we like to watch Hallmark movies about, that's where that happens. And whatever we can do to encourage that kind of thing is important.
Thank you, Randy.
I don't know if it's necessarily increasing programs. It's, it's more of just making sure the teachers at those Title I school buildings are having the resources they need to help those children succeed, and it's going to vary from school to school, and making sure the resources are, that they can access those resources in, in those buildings so that we're not having to transfer students from one neighborhood school to another neighborhood school just to receive one basic service. My, my goal would be to help implement resources in, in all buildings to make sure resources are readily available to those students so that we can help them achieve that education piece and help them move forward.
Thank you. Carly?
There's a lot of great things that are already happening in our schools, and I'm not sure that we can squeeze a whole lot more into our school day and ask even more of the work that the teachers are already doing. And so, one of the things that I'm excited about is the summer school program that's going to be starting this summer, and those schools that do have lower achievement levels and have struggling learners are going to have students that get the opportunity to continue their learning this summer in a very targeted way. They're going to be doing, learning math, and they're going to be learning reading, and they're going to be learning about having fun. And it's not about sitting in a classroom in the summer. It's about having experiential learning where they're going to be out doing hands-on things, maybe some things that these students otherwise wouldn't have been able to experience. And the goal of that, obviously, is to get them up to grade level as the same as their peers in other schools or even surpassing that. And so, I'm really excited about having the opportunity to have that be a pilot type of a program this summer and see the impact to those students. I really think it's going to be successful, and we're going to see an increase in interest and need for that in maybe some of our other schools as well, but it's a great way to not have that summer learning gap.
Thank you. Kent?
Well, Carly took my answer. The, the summer school program is one that, that I am also very proud of. But along with that summer school program, one of the things that we're looking at potentially But along with that summer school program, one of the things that we're looking at potentially expanding is in our, in our K through three classrooms, we're going to try and add 10 special education teachers for those youngest learners. And by, by being able to have that additional staff in those elementary schools that have the biggest challenges, that have the highest need, and have that help to, help reduce class sizes in those classes where there are behavior issues. One of the things that we know is changing in our school district and all over the country are behavior issues that are beginning to manifest themselves at, at an earlier age. And I think if we can get some of those behaviors dealt with, learn the causes so that we're not just treating symptoms, that's another way that will help is student achievement.
Thank you. Diana?
I would like to see more title involvement with all the school money, maybe even some training. I haven't been in it for a while, but when I was at Hawthorne, it all went toward reading and math grades and making sure that test scores are, are better. And actually passing is helpful to everyone, that the schools coming up or those teachers coming up especially. So that was, would be my hope.
Thank you. All right, the next question, and Randy, you'll answer first. We had a few questions come in on aggressive behaviors in the elementary school and how to handle, what are your thoughts on handling weapons, swearing, and physical aggression at the elementary level? Are those zero tolerance or dealt with on an individual basis at the principal's discretion? And another question asked about, would you support the Tier Two program which deals with student behavioral issues in the elementary schools? Why or why not?
Two-part question. First, first part with whether or not an elementary student brings a weapon to school, I've, I've got to deal with that firsthand as mentoring a little student who, who did bring a knife to school and ended up getting suspended. And I'm glad he wasn't completely kicked out for the rest of the year because that, that student needs that education. He needs to be given that second chance, the opportunity to, to receive the education that he deserves. And, and so dealing with it at an individual basis, I think would be best key moving, moving forward with as far as weapons, children bringing weapons to school. The Tier Two program, I got to listen in on that at one of the board meetings. And to me, it seems like it's, it's a program that's going to be successful and be able to help out the behaviors in the classrooms. So I would definitely like to see that program move forward and, and funding be shifted to help, help bring that program up.
Thank you. Carly?
Our Tier Two program is currently being used in some of our schools that have higher incidences of aggressive behavior. And it's in its early stages, but the, the feedback that we've gotten so far has been very positive, not just from teachers feeling like they have resources available to them, but also from parents feeling like they're getting resources that they can use at home as well and matching those same techniques that are being used at school with their children at home and having success in that. Unfortunately, many of our students are arriving at school at younger ages without the ability to do things like control their impulses or even make friends. And so I think it's important, part of this Tier Two program is really about helping them to control their, themselves, controlling their emotions, acting appropriately in appropriate situations, and knowing how they can change their behavior and getting some good positive reinforcement when that does happen. So I think there are many schools and, and students unfortunately that do need those skills, and it's important for us, when possible, to be able to provide those to the students and, and help them to complete their education.
Thank you. Kent?
Well, to answer the weapons question, school boards are legally obligated to expel a child that brings a gun to school if it's proven that, that that is actually the case. The, the ability to bring that child back after a short period of time or a long period of time, or expel them completely, is up to the superintendent. So the school board's hands are tied when it comes to that decision. The, the Tier Two Behavior Program is something that I am honestly very excited about. As I'd said before, we, we are having higher incidence of behavior issues at a younger age. And I think if we can, if we can again, try and find out what some of the causes of those behaviors are, we can, we can find a treatment program, keep that child in school. If you lock a kid up and they don't have access to learning, their behavior is going to get worse, not get better. So we need to figure out a way to get them educated while dealing with the behavior. Thanks.
Diana?
Tier Two, I'm very proud of. I only had it with my kids' schools, but I think it's going to be wonderful. It's just going to a few years maybe to iron out all the kegs and then they'll be fine. Now about discipline, again, it's kind of set in stone. If, if they do, if they do it, they're going to have to be in trouble. I'm for all that. As a kid in school at Hawthorne, my student, and I'm sure they did, had what they shouldn't have behind my back. And I turned around and saw it. They were turned in to the police, not to the police.
Resource officer.
Yeah, to the principal is what I meant. Same, P P P, P P P.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Oh, wow. I actually have personal experience with this issue. A good friend of mine in high school, he had learning disabilities. He was, sometimes swore a bit too much, but he was generally a good guy. He had a tough home. They were first-generation immigrants, Serbian. And one day, he brought a pocket knife to school and I was like, Zlot, you idiot, why do you have that? Put it away, you're going to get in trouble. He did not listen. Unfortunately, he was caught in the gym. He was just showing it to a friend and he got caught and he was thrown into eventually juvie. And that wrecked his whole high school career. People don't understand how hard zero tolerance programs can be. And this is, I'm, you know, you and I, the president, is right. Rule of law is so important. I'm a constitutionalist through and through. Rule of law has got to be followed. But this is one more reason why I'm disappointed to be a Republican in this state. Because the legislature, you guys, you gotta get, gotta go back to the drawing board and work with us. Give the school district and teachers a little bit more leeway when it comes to zero tolerance policies. Because, you know, 50 years ago, everyone brought a pocket knife to school. So we need to be smart about this, this, the program numero two, fantastic, great idea, all for it. I'm glad we're basically unanimous on this.
Thank you. And I did want to make sure that folks watching or listening at home know that we are taking your questions. So this is actually comes through from the phone. What do you feel is the ideal class size? And Carly, you'll go first on this one. Ideal class size?
Sure. I think the smaller class size have, sorry, the smaller class sizes have proven to really be effective for students and teachers, for student learning. When you have that more one-on-one or smaller class size, you, you do learn a lot better. Your instruction is more tailored. We also have to look at resources and finances and, and building sizes and things like that. And if we realistically had 15 students in a class, we would be building elementary school after elementary school after elementary school to try to have a place for these kids to go. So I guess I would say, I would probably 23, 25 is a pretty realistic class size. Think younger grades are harder because the kids are still learning. They're learning the routines of class and, and what is expected of them. And so when you have more students than that, it's very difficult. But as students get older and they have more self-control and they're more directed in their own self-learning, having that many students in a class isn't as big of a deal because they do have, they can participate more and they can help each other.
Thanks, Kent.
Well, I think 24 is a number that I think is an adequate class size. In a perfect world, if you have all perfect students. But we know that that's not the case. We have kids in special ed that have behavior issues. And a class with 24 students and six of those are kids with any kind of a behavior issue is far too large. If, you know, a class of 28 of perfect students, advanced learners, that would be just fine. The, the simple answer is that there isn't a simple answer. We, we have tried very hard to make sure that the resources are as available as possible so that if we have classes where there are kids with behavior issues, we can have an EA, we can maybe, as we expand the special ed potential project, we can have more teachers in the classrooms to help with those difficult situations.
Thank you. Diana?
20 students are my wonderful classroom that I would like in a dream, but it's never happened in my years of teaching and I don't expect it to happen now. But what, again, I would be willing to raise taxes, maybe another half a penny to go toward that. And then we can actually have more people in the smaller classrooms and maybe actually have 20 in the class and then we can actually learn something. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Okay. Sorry, my short-term memory isn't always the best. Could you please repeat the question?
Yes. What do you feel is the ideal class size?
The ideal class size? One-on-one? I don't know what the question, no. In, in the real world, here in the real world, 24 is pretty good. It's not an issue of numbers because I've been in college where I really, when I really started caring about what I did with my life and my education, you'd have classes where you're, a hundred or more, and you do just fine. And then you have classes where it could be a hundred more and you only have 20 and it's really great. What it really means is the teacher. And, you know, the, it's, this is a logistics issue, but when you have incentives for people to stay, they stay. Because we had such low teacher pay, we were losing a lot of our great, especially the experimental ones, a lot of our great teachers. Hopefully, now with the pay raise, this will change. And if we get out future incentives, we'll keep those teachers even longer and we'll attract, in fact, even more of the best, the greatest, the smartest, I sound like Donald Trump now, teachers that you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
The, the ideal class size can vary depending on the different studies you look at. U.S. Department of Education does cite that class size does matter, and the smaller class size you can get, the better results you will have. It was, it was just one of four reforms that they have, that they have proven to work. Large-scale experiments reveal that children who are in smaller classes, especially in the early grades, will test higher. They will have fewer disciplinary problems. They will graduate from high school, go to college, own their own home. They've done these studies and followed children from beginning all the way to the end. They've done, they've done their due diligence on proving class size does matter. One of the other things they discovered is some non-cognitive skills that are not captured by tests, such as persistence, motivation, self-esteem also increased with a smaller class size. So they, I have some other numbers, but my time's up.
Folks can find you after the forum and hear more.
Yes.
All right, Carly. Oh, you started this. I knew it would happen at some point.
Can I redo it?
There it was. All right. Thank you. All right, our next question is on immersion, and Kent, you'll answer first. Will you support the expansion of language immersion schools? Please give your reasons for your answer.
Well, I've, I've been very supportive of our immersion schools. I happened to be on the school board when we started the Spanish immersion program. And seeing that program grow from one kindergarten class to two kindergarten classes in a, in a first-grade class, to now this fall, when we'll be opening a building that will house that completely, seeing that grow into the middle school, it's a, it is a terrific program. Again, there, there is statistical evidence that kids that learn two languages starting at an early age develop their brains in a way where they learn more quickly, they develop critical thinking skills earlier, and it is just terrific. I struggle speaking English, so these kids that speak two languages in kindergarten and first grade, I'm just in awe. It's a terrific program.
Thank you. Diana?
Immersion, I think is a very important, again, wonderful situation that is happening someplace in the district. Again, it's really hard to always get all the staff they needed to hire on it. I think now that we're paying more, it might not have such an issue. But it's definitely an area that needs as much help as we can get and support.
Thank you. Peter?
Okay, if I was a smart man, and I'm not always that smart of a man, I would just go with the easy answer, say yes. Immersion programs are good. One of my best friends in the world, Carrie Lorcher, amazing, amazing woman, her oldest son Clark, her only son Clark, I should say, is in the Spanish immersion kid, class at Rosa Parks. I've taught there. The kids there are great. Rosa Parks, however, is on the bottom of, it's one of our focus schools, and you have to go into why it's called a focus school. But, but a different immersion school is at the top. So we need to make sure that if we decide to push the program further, we need to make sure that not only here at the board, but the parents and the communities have that data to be able to side with us if that's where we want to go. Because budgets are limited and we may have to choose between pushing more programs like immersion programs, which are great, but because of our special needs, it may be, maybe instead we're going to have to get people with additional training and, I don't know, mental illness and special needs. So this is something that, as a community, we're going to have to decide together.
Thank you. Randy?
The immersion program has, has proved to be successful for some students. It's not for all students. So moving forward, definitely keeping with the Spanish immersion program, I think will, will be successful. It'll give an opportunity for other children that chance at an education. Moving forward, however, I think maybe implementing some other types of specialized schools to help create those opportunities for those other kids that immersion isn't, isn't their thing. So looking at different opportunities to, to increase that chance for kids to specialize in different, different areas to, to ultimately get to what we want in education. And so if elected, I would look at trying to implement some, implement those specialized schools to help increase opportunity.
Thank you. Carly?
Well, as a parent of two students in the Spanish immersion program, I can say that I'm very proud of the work that has been done from starting the program up until now. I have a sixth grader at Edison and I have a third grader at Rosa Parks, and they're both doing very well. I can tell you that the things that my students have experienced that are very different from other students are more than just the academic piece of it, and it's more than just the language piece of it. My, my daughters and their classmates, they can go up to an atlas and they can say, I know people from all of these countries. And they don't just know the country, they know people and they know the culture. And so I think in addition to teaching them the same curriculum that they're teaching all over the district, we're also teaching them that cultural competence and that compassion for other people and for people who are different. I would be happy to, I would be glad to see another immersion program here. I'm kind of with Randy. I think we have an immersion program here and it's Spanish and it's doing very, very well. There are many, many other options for additional specialized schools. I wouldn't be against it. And I think if the community supported it, we could have students to fill another immersion school with the benefits it brings.
Thank you. All right, Diana, you'll be first up for this next question. What, if any, are the downsides for the Sioux Falls School District in the new state aid for education formula?
A lot? No. Standards, you're talking.
The question is about this new state aid for education formula, funding formula.
Again, we need to learn about it and we need to read about it. And right now, tonight, I can't really say. It's something that is on my mind, but obviously it's on someone else's mind, so it would definitely be something I would need to look at and consider. Sorry.
Thank you. Peter?
Hey, I thought Diane did the best she could. How in the world are we supposed to know it with even the SDEA doesn't know? Right now, we just don't know. That's the honest problem. The legislature in this state has a terrible communication problem. They, we just don't know. And this is something we'll have to watch out in the future to say, well, it was great now, but because of this weird part in the formula, now all of our teachers are again at a lower rate than the rest of the country. So we need to keep an extra eye on it. Also, again, the state legislatures could have done a lot better job putting together the formula. There was a plan where then not only would you have the half penny sales tax, but also they'd look through where money was going and you're caught spending here, you know, tug on this, and try to get even more pay for teachers. And maybe we'll see that again, maybe we're not, like I said, we kind of just have to wait and see.
Thank you. Randy?
The, the one time, the tax bill offers a one-time increase is my concern. I don't, I don't see how that will, moving forward, I'm, I, I don't see how that's going to help increase an annual raise. So that's one of my concerns with the tax increase. The formula, Todd Veek presented a formula a year, year and a half ago that made a lot of sense to me. And it basically was breaking down the numbers as far as how the state does. If the state does well, let the education system do well. Right now, we're capped at a max where we can, on the max amount of money that we can receive in a year. So being able to adjust that formula to make sure that if the state does well, our education system does well, just so that they're in line parallel with each other.
Thank you. Carly? Carly?
As we mentioned earlier with the question regarding how are we going to compensate some of our other support staff, I think that's one of the downsides of this bill is that when you look at the bargaining groups that we as a school district work with, there are eight of them, and this really goes to teachers. And even within that group, it doesn't compensate school nurses, librarians, instructional coaches as part of that teacher category. So that's a huge downside because we are going to come up with the funds out of our own budget to be able to make sure we can compensate those groups of people. Another downside could be that you have to give 85% of your, the earnings or the money that you get from the state has to go to teachers. And I'm not saying it shouldn't go to teachers, but there's a penalty if that doesn't happen. So if we're close to that 85%, something changes and you miss it by a fraction, that next year you have to pay back in a penalty form. You have to pay that back to the state, which then puts the school district, whether it's us or any other district, in a very bad position financially. So I think there are some downsides. It's brand new. We have a lot to learn. There's a lot of details and so it's important that we understand that and go forward and be successful in implementing it.
Thank you, Kent.
Well, I think that in, at the outset, it looks very good and it is. It allows us to pay professionals a professional salary and that is extremely important to me. The downside is that we have other expenses, other costs in our district that aren't just salaries. And the, you know, Carly mentioning the other employee groups, which we've discussed a little bit earlier, is another concern for me. But we also have to look at what we got in an increase for us to be able to heat and cool our buildings, turn the lights on, do all of those things. Our school district is very fortunate to be a growing district. We have to be able to meet those physical needs of our buildings and we're being constrained by the amount of money that we're getting to be able to do that. So overall, we do have some concerns that I think we need to address and that are going to cause us to struggle just a little bit.
Thank you. All right, I was trying to decide if I could eke in one more question, but I think we are at the point where we need to go to closing statements. But I did want you all to hear, we had a lot of great questions, every single one of them relevant to the job that you're trying to get. So I'm going to read the topics that we didn't get to cover tonight. And if you want to touch on any in your comments, please do, or if the folks in the audience who didn't have their question answered, I'm sure that our candidates would be available to answer your questions after. Talk at one, a lot of questions about your visibility in the schools and how you can truly listen to the school personnel and teachers about what they need. Opinions on staffed arms with weapons, board accomplishments, how you would, what your feelings are on how classrooms should be organized, your feelings on Common Core, sex education, technology, advanced placement, year-round school, and whether at the school board meeting time could be adjusted. So a wide range of topics that we didn't get to in addition. So we're going to go to closing comments. Again, you have one minute and I believe at this point we are at, Peter, back to you to begin with a minute of closing comments.
All right. Thank you. Right now, there are oodles of parents that are praying with their kids about how they're going to get their kids to pass the school year. They're worried that their kids aren't connecting right with the teachers and that the teachers misunderstand. They're worried about their kids connecting with other kids. They're worried about if there is a future for their kids or if they're going to have to move again. You know, we're, this is a very religious city, a very kind city, and we are a very loving community overall. I pray with them. I hope that the needs of the students will be able to be met. I hope and pray that the school board, whoever gets elected, doesn't get elected, whoever is in charge the coming years will be able to meet those needs and issues. You know, for those that are struggling, I wish you the best. I understand the feeling. I was once there myself. By my heavenly father's hand, I was blessed to survive and I'm here now. And this would not be possible without kind teachers that put the effort out to care for me and my heavenly father. So, thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
I want to thank the Chamber and League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. I thank everyone in attendance and to those watching at home for your interest in this year's election. In closing, I want to take time to thank three very important ladies in my life. First, I want to thank my mom, Laura Hartley, who worked two, sometimes three jobs in overtime, who put aside her wants to make sure her children's needs were met, to ensure we would receive an education we deserve. Second, I want to thank my wife, Kirsten Dobberpool, who for the last 13 years has shown me how much hard work, dedication, and love goes into education to ensure children receive the education they deserve. Finally, I want to thank my mother-in-law, Dr. Kathy Colter, for motivating me to get involved with the community by mentoring a little first grader eight years ago. That truly has shown me how important it is to ensure our children receive the education they deserve. I'm here to offer fresh perspective to the school board and I hope for your vote April 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly?
The past three years have given me the knowledge and experience to continue to be an effective board member. I've been involved with a variety of committees and boards, have positive relationships with people in administration, teachers, the chamber, and the community. These experiences helped me to be able to ask critical questions, see the big picture, and have a positive impact on the students and staff of the district. We have discovered and confirmed many ideas about student achievement through the strategic planning process, challenges for students of diversity and poverty, needs of our elementary, middle, and high school students, and opportunities for further partnerships and support from our community. There are many new initiatives and programs that will come from our strategic plan and I look forward to being a part of the success that is to come for the Sioux Falls community. I appreciate the support that I received from my friends, family, and the community during my first term, and I'm excited to be able to hopefully continue for another term. Thank you for your vote on April 12th.
Thank you, Kent.
Well, I would like to also thank our sponsors this evening. It's a great opportunity for us to meet the public. I wish we had this kind of turnout at our school board meetings. That would show me that people really are truly interested. It's been a great experience for me to work as a member of the school board. I grew up in Sioux Falls, am a product of the Sioux Falls Public Schools. My wife, Luanne, also a product of the Sioux Falls Public Schools. Both of my boys graduated from Roosevelt High School and I have a new grandson who plans to attend the Sioux Falls Public Schools. He'll be the fifth generation of our family to attend here. And tonight, as I was getting ready, I was putting my suit on and I found a quote that is from Nelson Mandela. And the quote is, "Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world." I want to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Okay, I'm Diana Stelling. Again, thank you to allowing me to come tonight to the League of Women Voters and the Chamber. But as a new elected, hopefully elected individual on the board, I just want to make sure everyone knows that God will always be the, I'm, sorry, with me. I'm a very religious person and I know that I will listen and I will do what I can with God leading me to be stronger and to do what is needed to be done because we have a lot of fixing and a lot of good. I'm not saying it's all bad. Being teaching, I know it's a lot good. So that, thank you for that.
Thank you. And this is going to conclude our candidate forum tonight. We appreciate all of you in attendance tonight and those watching at home. Let's thank our school board candidates for their participation in tonight's with a round of applause. And I do want to say to the wonderful crowd here and all of the questions, I do apologize that we all would have needed to be speed talkers or to have this be about twice as long to get all the questions in. So I hope that the candidates are available if some of you want to ask their questions directly. As we all know, the right to vote is an essential part of making our democracy function, so we encourage everyone to exercise this right on Tuesday, April 12th. Have a great night.